With liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our troops serving our country. Thank you. You have a seat. Okay, welcome to the Village Board meeting, Monday, June 5th. It's now 7:00 PM. I'd like to set the dates for the June, uh, July meeting. There'll be no workshop meeting for July. And the July regular board meeting will be July 10th at 7:00 PM. And that was a change, so mark your calendar, just take note that it's on July 10th. Okay, Fire Department Chief Jeremy, please.
Good evening. Um, just two items on the agenda. The first one, the volunteer hose company is seeking permission to hold their annual car show, October 1st, 2017, with a rain date of October 8th, 2017.
Do we have a resolution or are you making a motion?
No, we have no resolution, just make a motion.
Yeah, just make a motion.
Have a motion to hold the car show on October 1st?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Uh, next, we have, uh, seeking approval of a few new members. Mike Halper, a 16, 17-year-old member from the Hook and Ladder Company. You want me to just do them all at once?
Yeah, do them all at once.
Uh, Joseph Modica, an over 18 member for the Hose Company. Azrael Wolf, an over 18 member for the Hose Company, and his brother Victor Wolf, also an over 18 member for the Hose Company.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the, uh, to approve the new members? The four new members, three Hose Company, one Hook and Ladder?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Looks like the Hose Company is taking over the Hook and Ladder.
We hope not. And the, uh, the Hook and Ladder hosted their car show yesterday, their Jeep show, down in the D F lot. It was a very nice show and great success, so.
Yeah, I was down there earlier in the morning, drove through, looked great, looked like they had a great turnout.
I was on the tour.
Right? Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Culture and Recreation, Ms. Mills.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board.
Good evening.
A few things that we have coming up, I'm gonna condense it tonight, but you have all the events in front of you. Uh, one new program that we have that we're really excited to showcase for the summer, Yoga in the Park. Uh, tonight is the first of the series, it's yoga inside the community center tonight, but from here on, every Monday, the 12th, 19th, and the 26th, we'll have yoga in the park outside. So, all are invited, it's an adults beginner class, um, everyone should bring their mats, but it's a great class, we're excited about it.
I had someone just expressing some desire to attend a yoga class, so will be happening in the park. No, it's not Frank. Okay.
And again, I'll skip through to the next big event that we have coming up, is this Saturday, it's the Fishing Derby. We're, uh, always have a great turnout for that, it will be at 9:30 is registration, and 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock is fishing, and then after that, it will be a barbecue at the Mawa Elks. So, we partner that with the Mawa Elks, it's a great day for kids, for families, so we're really looking forward to that this Saturday.
Great, perfect.
And I think that is it. Uh, we, the pool will be opening June 24th, so we are steadily getting ready for that, we are trying to paint the pool, but the weather is giving us a few issues with that, and just touch up the paint in the pool, but other than that, we're getting, uh, we're getting that ready, and other than that, we're all set.
And the registration is June 13th?
The first registration will be June 13th this year, it'll be upstairs, all registration is upstairs in Village Hall. Everyone is asked to take a new photo for registration, so we have everybody in the computer.
Perfect, alright.
Any questions?
Anybody have anything?
Wednesday Walk with the Mayor.
The next Walk with the Mayor is going to be, let me tell you, will be June 14th, and then the next one after that will be June 20th, and they will be at 7:00 PM in the evening, so anyone would like to attend, they can park here in Village Hall. It goes around the loop, what is it, 1.4, Mayor?
Yes.
1.4 miles, I, you can walk the longer loop, or the shorter loop, which is .9, I believe, um, to go all the way around. So, it's a nice evening, any questions that you have for the Mayor, it's a time to get them.
There you go.
1.4 miles of talking, you can ask many questions you like, so.
It's been successful.
It's been very successful, it's a great, it's a great new program, so, um, you know, a lot of good things coming up this summer, concerts, everything, we're looking forward to it.
Great.
Alright?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you gonna go out?
Mr. Rella.
I've got questions.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Um, the Rockland County Office of Community Development has requested that they wanna examine the files and do a short audit of the 2015 and 2016 Community Development Block Grant. The 2015 one was the Orange Avenue Sidewalk Project, and the 2016 is Part 1 of the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. So, I've been working with Charles and Mike Genito, and that's going to be occurring on Thursday at 1:30 here. So, we're in very good shape, so, um, I feel very good about that.
Okay.
We've begun the environmental review process on the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project with the Rockland County Office of Community Development, which is the lead agency for that environmental review. Um, it looks like it will be approximately 30 days from now until the announcements of the awards of the 2017 block grants are made, so, uh, we're looking forward to that.
And that will be for possibly Part 2?
Part 2, right, which is $180,000 plus $1,000 that we put in for.
What was it, 180?
180 plus, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Um, as you walked in the building today, you might have seen some potted plants around, uh, the outside, near the 9/11 Memorial, um, and then also at John Suffolk Park, which is down on Orange Avenue, where it meets Lafayette Avenue. And, um, that was a effort which was spearheaded by Sandy Sted and Sheila Foster, and, uh, they did those plants, plantings on Sunday. So, it's a part of a beautification process that they're doing. Also had a number of high school students that participated in helping with that effort, so that was very nice.
Yeah, it looks very nice, I've seen them, I've looked at them, looks good.
Uh, one, just one final thing, um, a old Suffolk resident who used to be a neighbor of mine, her name was Helen Forn, and she grew up on Orange Avenue, and, um, she was born in 1912, and she passed away on Friday at the age of 105. So, uh, she had quite an extended family, a lot of them grew up here in Suffolk, some continue to live in Suffolk, but, uh, I just wanted to mention that, that that was a lovely lady, and, uh, she'll be missed.
Wow, okay, thank you, Fred. Assistant Village Attorney, Mr. Magrino.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Uh, as the Board knows, Orange Avenue Apartments LLC is proceeding with a project on Orange Avenue. As part of the approvals for that project with the Planning Board, they're required to post a performance bond to ensure the, uh, performance, I'm sorry, the completion of certain public improvements. Uh, they reviewed the, the public improvements have been reviewed with Mr. Sewicki, and an amount was determined of $118,000, uh, to ensure that those improvements were completed. Uh, the Planning Board recommended that we get a performance bond in that amount. The applicant has provided a performance bond in the amount of $118,000, agreeing to do it, collateralized by a letter of credit issued by Sterling National Bank, which is a so-called Evergreen Letter of Credit, it renews every year unless they give us sufficient notice ahead of time, and if they do, we can draw upon the letter of credit, but it's for the protection of the village to make sure that, as part of that project, that they, uh, complete the public improvements, and if they do not, we can draw down on the letter of credit. So, I have the resolution before the Board, if anyone has any questions on it.
Does anyone have any questions in regards to the resolution for the performance bond?
No.
No, would you like to read it?
Sure, do you want just the resolved portion?
Yes.
Yeah, just be it resolved, the Village of Suffolk hereby accepts, receives, and files a performance bond from Orange Avenue Apartments LLC dated May 16th, 2017, and the collateral for said bond in the form of an irrevocable letter of credit issued by Sterling Bank in favor of the Village of Suffolk in the amount of $118,000, which bond and letter of credit require all public improvements with respect to the project to be completed on or before November 18th, 2018, for the property located on Orange Avenue and identified on the town overran po tax map as Section 54.35, Block 2, Lot 6, and be it further resolved, that said performance bond and letter of credit shall not be released until all such public improvements have been completed to the satisfaction of the Village of Suffolk, and upon recommendation of the Department of Public Works and Planning Board, and upon formal resolution of the Village Board upon such recommendations. I'll ask for a motion on that, I guess.
Do I have a motion, Azred?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, Mr. Magrino, just to be clear, um, that means that when they, if they partially complete, they can't approach the Board about, uh, reducing the letter of credit?
Uh, well, the, the, the law does permit them, I guess, to go to the Planning Board to do that, if they, if they do, let's say, you know, knock off $50,000 worth of items, theoretically they could, but that's to the Board's discretion at that time.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know what, Mr. Magrino, while, while you're up, why don't we jump over to, let's see, what's that?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Chief Fire Department and the Police Department.
I just have one item tonight to bring up on top of the update, and that would be the creation of a Senior Detective position, and just to explain, and I know we spoke about it at the workshop, it is not an additional officer, it is actually regained an officer, and I'll explain, which I spoke about on last Wednesday at the workshop, Detective fantasies, we'd always promoted to Sergeant, uh, early this year. We did not replace the detective spot, meaning we gained an extra officer on patrol, which, which was needed, which worked out very well. The detective position gets 10% above patrolman, and what we're looking to do is, due to the fact that one less detective, and Detective Long will be picking up most of his extra duties, we're asking to have Detective Long, being that he's been a detective for over 20-plus years, in our detective bureau, continuous, of continuing service, to receive 5% in additional with this position. It's only for a detective with 20-plus years on, we don't anticipate having another one at this point for many years in the future, if ever.
20, 20-plus years in the title, in, in the Bureau, in the detective.
Correct. 1989 is a detective, correct.
Sorry.
And bottom line is, we gained an officer on the road, which helped all the way, everybody around, uh, finances, manpower, everything, so we'll ask if there's to be created, and the only one that will be receiving is Detective Craig Long.
And also Detective Long will be assuming the additional duties of the reduced staff in the detective Bureau.
Correct, that's correct, one less detective, that's correct.
Right, okay.
So, we'll be doing, definitely doing more with less.
There's no resolution, Bar?
No.
Resolution?
There's no resolution, have to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion to create the position of Senior Detective, and, uh, mind you, this was voted on and approved by the PBA also?
Correct.
Uh, so do I have a motion to create the position and fill the position with Detective Craig Long?
Motion.
Have a sec?
Uh, they'd be two separate motions.
Two separate, one to establish the position?
Make a motion to establish the position.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Do I have a motion to appoint Detective Craig Long to the title of Senior Detective?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, what happens to his, I, I, you may have spoken to it, Mr. Osborn, but what happens to his present position?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What happens to his present position?
Well, detective, detective is an appointed position, it's not civil service, so there's no change in status to all of his position.
Okay.
That's a good question, and I know that comes, that's come up with us also. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, very much, thank you for your support, as always.
Thank you for, for working with us and restructuring that Police Department, and we are truly doing more with less within the Police Department itself, overall. I mean, we're doing that overall for the whole village, but the police, uh, the Police Department's contribution is, is great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I absolutely thank you very much. I just wanted to give you a couple quick updates, we, we are participating, we should be just participated, in the New York State Click It or Click It campaign, which is, um, basically targeting seatbelt use to make, to ensure that drivers going through the village using seatbelts, that was very productive, we did that last week, there's a certain timeframe, we're with the State, um, Division of Criminal Justice Services and Traffic Safety Unit, to do that, worked out very well. We'll be doing a series of commercial vehicle checks, obvious reasons, I do not want to give the dates, but it will show you, we'll be doing a series of them, commencing very shortly. That's we check commercial vehicle trucks, for safe, for weight, for safety, to keep our roads safe and to keep everybody else safe on the roads when operating them. Our bicycle patrol, we've had that out, we continue to put that out, in our downtown business district, very good with the, um, the merchants, residents, and very good for a deterrent for crime. In May, we had 679 police calls, in blooders, with 30 arrests. Our community service end of it, which I think, you know, we've, we definitely take very seriously, we've worked, taken old school barbecue, and I gotta thank the Mayor, because I couldn't get the barbecue grill going, and he came over, the person walked by, and he got a call for me, and I gotta fix, but thank you for doing it, and next Tuesday, I'd like to invite the Board, I'm sorry, next Monday, we're cooking for about 700 people at County Schools Olympic Day, we've teamed up with the school, and we'll be up there with girls, so we'd like to invite you up, if you're in a daytime, wanna come up and to the Olympic Day and participate with us, we'd love to have you up there. Dairy Hockey, winding down, we're signing a ton of kids up for the fall season, and, uh, we will be assisting Academy with the Fishing Derby, we have a Dairy Pool Party coming up, we got a lot of things going on in the community, and on top of enforcement, if we sent law enforcement, it's multi-prob, you need prevention, you need involvement with the community, seniors, youth, and you also need your enforcement end of it, and we, we pretty much are doing that, and I think that's critical, why we are fortunate, it's a multi-pronged system we use, and it does work, and it's kept our crime rate down, I believe, the past several years, so, I will thank you guys for it, thank you.
Excellent. And just to, just to remind everyone, with the Click It or Click It campaign, that's a state-funded campaign, is that correct? So, that's no, no money coming out of the Village coffees for the Click It or Click It campaign?
Correct.
Which is, serves as a, you know, a safety and enforcement issue, so, that's helpful for our village, right?
That's true.
Along with the commercial, uh, checkpoints.
Yes, and then also to stop DWI checks, we do, those are funded by the county, so it's good, they reimburse, the village has the benefit of doing the enforcement part of it to protect our community, but the, that the funding comes elsewhere, which is awesome.
Right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to audience participation, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak?
Joe Maragueno, 65 Wayne Avenue. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Department of Public Works, they, uh, removed my next-door neighbor Mary, with a message, uh, they cut down her, uh, tree, and they eventually stump-grinded it for her, and it came out beautiful, thank you, grass is beautiful. I guess my turn's next, the 65 Wayne, everything's been marked out, and I've just gotta wait a little bit patiently. Now, back to the condition of Wayne Avenue, I took it upon myself with a, a linear roller that measures footage, and from Pavilion Road to the transition sign, in other words, where the double lanes are going westbound underneath the thruway authority, it's 560 feet. That's 560 feet, and again, this is directed at the DOT, who just doesn't seem to really care about what's going on on this road, as far as safety. 560 feet for people to punch on their pedal and race underneath that overpass and continually cut each other off, all the time.
The 560 feet, it, it's two lanes, of 560 feet at that, okay.
Yes, they are, starting from Pavilion Road and ending right where that transition sign, the yellow sign that says the lane is ending and is turning into a single lane. I always wondered how long it was, I thought maybe 300 feet, but 560 was the answer. The continuing deterioration of this street is deplorable. If they had paved it the right way, back in October, like they did all the rest of these streets and the surrounding area, I wouldn't be up here wasting my time. You go down Wayne Avenue, there's potholes, you go down Wayne Avenue, it's, ew, Wayne Avenue, it's, Songage Avenue looks beautiful, Lafayette looks beautiful, Washington Avenue, Pavilion Road, Utopia Parkway, Memorial Drive, everything looks nice, not Wayne Avenue. We are continually getting swept under the rug, as far as quality of life in this area, and I blame the state, not the village, because it's a state road. I'm frustrated beyond whatever, I mean, things can be better, the simple things I had requested in the past, towards the village, or if we could talk to these people that are higher-ups as far as engineering, as far as talking to supervisors for the DOT. Every day I wake up, I get to look across the street at a memorial from a woman that passed away two years ago due to a car accident, a very preventable car accident, and it bothers me to this day, that was two years ago that she died. This is something that should have been investigated a long time ago. Anytime I worked for the New York State Thruway Authority, when there is a fatality, they're in an accident, they shut down that road, and they try to figure out, how did it happen, how to re-prevent this from happening again, how did this person die? They will shut the road down until they figure it out, measurements, everything. When this woman got struck by a car, not a single person bothered from the state to come over there and see why this happened. I don't wanna see this ever happen again. I see people, for some reason, they go across the street, through a sidewalk that will end underneath the thru, and I'm like, God, I hope they don't get killed. Now, I know this gentleman over there, we got money, and it's, sidewalks are gonna be, you know, they're gonna get fixed, and, uh, that's just a piece of the pie, okay, it takes a lot of time, and I understand that, but, uh, you know, the state could do better, and I've been, you know, like I said, I've been asking for crosswalks, anything, you know, to, uh, signage, pedestrians, you know, neon signs, anything that could prevent me from seeing a person struggling with her life in the middle of a road, I don't wanna see it no more. It bothers me to this day, that was her closest friend, and I don't mean to speak for you, Rosemary, but, uh, I'll never forget that day as long as I live, and I never wanna see it again, so, this is why I always come here and express myself. Again, it's not directed my frustration at this village, it's, it's.
Well, you have to direct it to someone, and, you know, I guess we are the recipient of it, and as you know, and we will, you know what, I'm, I'm going to revisit it again.
Yeah.
And there may be an opportunity that didn't exist before, um, I don't know if you've read recently, but, uh, the state is going to be doing a study of Route 17 through Slotsburg, so, the very team that is gonna be working in Slotsburg could very easily be deployed to do 586 feet in the Village of Suffolk.
I hope so.
So, I think that's something that we're going to try to, uh, discuss with, uh, we'll find out from Slotsburg who they've been dealing with from the state, and try to get them to see reason once and for all.
Okay, was the state responsible for the paving job that was taking place October of 2016, uh, on Wayne Avenue? Were they partnered with, the money was associated to repave the road, you know, one side of the road, I know that's all they wanted to do?
No, that was, um, Orange and Rockland.
Orange and Rockland, okay.
They were mandated to do it in a specific way by the state.
Yeah.
But Orange and Rockland rebuilt that.
Okay, it's, it's just a shame, because it really could have been done the right way, and unfortunately, it's paying the price as usual, it's, I know it's typical state politics, or if it's from Cuomo down, you know, or whatever it is, uh, there's other people that gotta follow what the higher-ups tell them, and I understand that, but it's, again, it's done wrong, you know, and it's, we're paying for it, I mean, it's, it's, it's not good.
You know, Joe, that I was out there numerous times, I was on the phone with you outside of your house with the state representatives, with David Carlucci, it, it is utterly ridiculous.
It's, and I.
That they paved half a road.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the state, it was O and R, but, they dug up half the road, they're only gonna fix half the road.
Yeah, no, I know, no, you were always there, Mr. Mayor, you really were, from the beginning, you were there, you really were. I couldn't ask for a more quicker response from anybody, I've seen it, even with my own supervisors, if I complain about something, hey, and all of a sudden, two weeks go by, you were there, I called you up, you were there immediately, so I couldn't ask for a better person to come out.
We're gonna, we're gonna take another look at it again.
Okay. Other than that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got to down, remind the mayor to back there.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, and I, well, a couple things that I wanted to, uh, my name is Beth Jolly, for those who don't know me, and I've been a resident of the Village of Suffolk for about 25 years, and every once in a while, I come up to these meetings, and I kinda gather things that are bothering me and my neighbors, um, because we live on Orange Avenue, and as residents of Orange Avenue, we see and hear a lot, and I'm glad that somebody brought up, um, the idea of people speeding in this village, because Orange Avenue happens to be a racetrack. And today, I was sitting on my computer, and this car made it, and this was at 1:15 in the afternoon, he made it from the light down there by Mawa, heading up into Suffolk, and my house is, third house up, third house up, and, um, I swear to God, it took him two seconds to pass my house, and I said, uh-uh, no more, I said, so I called the Police Department, and I said, hey, guys, you gotta start doing something about this, because with the summer coming.
Ms. Jolly, you gotta go back to the microphone.
Ms. Jolly, please.
You gotta go back to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, yeah, so I told the police, and I said, hey, guys, you gotta, you gotta do us residents a favor. I said, we have people that are racing up the road, I said, there's one particular fellow who I think has a brand-new white Ford F-150, and he likes to start at the light, come up almost in front of my house, jam on his brakes so that the truck kinda swerves a little, and then starts it up again, and he does it three times, and by that time, he's up to about where the funeral home is. And I said, you know, one day, someone's gonna get it, and it's just dangerous, it's very dangerous. So, I was just, came tonight because I'd just like to know whether or not, you know, the officers can, um, pay attention to the, to Orange Avenue, what's going on. Okay, I appreciate that. Um, a personal note for me, if I have a question about my, um, tax bill I got the other day, um, who do I speak to?
You could call, you could call the Treasury, you could call the village clerk.
Okay, I can call Virginia, okay.
She knows all.
She knows all.
Okay, so this, the gentleman that spoke tonight about Orange Avenue, um.
Sidewalk.
Uh, excuse me?
Fred, Fred Long.
Fred? I was wondering what had ever happened to that, kinda like just stopped.
Back to the microphone, Ms. Jolly.
I'm so sorry, it kinda like just stopped the work on the, the project.
Oh, the, the job was done, sidewalks are playing your house hard, really well, Christine.
No, they're not, they have cracks in them already, and that's another reason that I'm here, because I.
They had a new one.
Yeah, well, so were the parking spots, but they messed that up, and they had to try to get the white paint off, and they made such a mess of it, it's, it's, it's shameful.
So, is it, Ms. Jolly, is there a, is there an issue with the new sidewalks?
Yes.
There is, okay.
I told Charles Sewicki about it. to get the white paint off, and they made such a mess of it, it's shameful.
So, is it, Ms. Jolly, is there a, is there an issue with the new sidewalks?
Yes.
There is?
I told Charles Wiki about it about three months ago.
Oh.
And I called up and left one or two more messages about it, never called me back, known for doing that. And, you know, my grandfather was a master carpenter from Norway. So, he had the ability to build anything you want. He built the original Taffey Bridge, he was the foreman on that. He built about five different schools in Rockland County, he was the head foreman on all of them. So, when I see shabby work, I know it. And within six months of those sides, or curbs going in, they were cracking. And I called Charles, and he came over with the company that had done it, the work, and they looked at it, I don't know what they discussed. And then as soon as about a month ago, month and a half ago, I called him again. And I said, guess what? I found two more cracks in the sidewalks. I said, do you know what that's gonna mean? I said, that means that within the next two years or three years, with moisture getting in there, they're gonna start to crumble and crack and become worse. And where are we gonna be? We're gonna be having the same old crappy curbs in Suffering again. And I'd like to know why. I mean, I hope you didn't, or he didn't sign off on that contract, because...
Well, I didn't get a chance to speak to him about it, but Charles, we'll discuss this, the, is there an issue with the sidewalks on Orange Avenue?
I haven't seen any, I, because Jolly had mentioned it before.
No, you came over and I showed it to you.
There was a crack in the curb that they went out to the contractor, that we'll get them back to fix that curb, now you're saying there's multiple cracks. So, we'll have to look at it, and we'll speak to the contractor, and unfortunately, you know, we didn't pay the contractor full now, including the tenant. However, the contractor, I'm sure, you may have issued them back.
I don't know how you can sit there and say that, because I let you, I let you know about these cracks, I let you know about these cracks months ago, this crack. And you came over to the house, because I know I was still recuperating from my knee surgery, and I hobbled out there. And then I just called you within the last month and a half and said, Charles, but I wanna, I wanna remind you, I wanna remind you what you said to me, okay? You said, well, they've been there a couple of months, and that's normal wear and tear. No, it's not. Those, they should not be cracking when they've only been in there less than a year. No, that's wrong.
All right, Ms. Jolly, we're gonna, I'm gonna discuss it, we're gonna follow up with that.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Let me see, what else?
You know what, yeah, I'll get that.
That's it, everything else was covered.
Okay, I know that you also spoke to me in regards to the...
Oh, yeah, to the...
The railroad.
The railroad.
And the tracks along Orange Avenue. So, I did have the DPW take photos. I took photos myself, I spoke to, I believe he's the real estate attorney, his name's Mike Murphy, and I believe I mentioned it to you.
Yeah.
So, we are following up with that and trying to clean up the area along Orange Avenue and the tracks.
Do you want me, I mean, I'm offering my assistance if you want me to help?
You know what, I will give you the contact information also, and if you would like to, as a citizen, take some photos yourself and forward them also, you know, maybe it will, we'll get some more action out of them.
That might be a little difficult, because I'm having knee replacement again at the end of the month.
Oh. How about I just give you the contact information, and you can draft an email to them?
I like that idea.
How's that?
All right, do you want me to call you, you call me, or what?
Yes, you can call me, please.
Okay.
Or, I'll get your number after the meeting, or Virginia, Virginia, you have her number? Okay, Virginia has your number.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome.
Hello. My name is Jessica Rovenza, I live on Ramapo Avenue, and I'm here to talk about a speeding problem on that street. I've talked numerous times to Mr. Mayor Markounis, and you did put in a stop sign for me, and it was used for one day, covered with garbage, garbage bags, and then taken out recently. There was a tree that was supposedly blocking one of them, which I thought could be trimmed back, or we could at least move the stop sign somewhere else, because it's really a big safety concern for not only my family, but numerous families in the neighborhood. Many of them have talked to me about it, people I've had over at my house are like shocked about how many people speed by. I actually did today go around the neighborhood, basically just on Ramapo Ave, since that's where the problem is, and I got almost 60 signatures. I told them that I would be requesting three stop signs on the corners of West Maple and Ramapo, West Multebay and Ramapo, and Jersey Avenue and Ramapo Ave. This way, we can slow some people down. The, you know, it's 25 miles per hour, and we have people that are traveling like it's a highway. We have vans, we have 16-wheeler trucks, we have O-N-R trucks speeding down. It's, you know what, for young kids, you can only teach them so much about street safety, they're very impulsive. And I have a little daughter who's gonna be four soon, she's special needs, and she's very impulsive. And you know what, sometimes she runs away from me, and it's scary. It's scary when someone's driving 60 miles an hour down a 25 mile-per-hour zone. And if she gets hurt, I'm left without a child. If I get hurt, my child, my family is left without health insurance. If my husband got hurt, I'm left without a breadwinner of my family. And it's just, it's not fair. We need to do something about it. I've talked, I've talked to Clark, he has police officers there, you know, numerous times, but they can't be there 24/7. And it's just a cross path for Jersey, and everybody flying down to get there. And I really need these stop signs to be put in.
Okay, Ms. Rovenza, so, I have the traffic study that was conducted a couple of years ago with me for review, I'm gonna sit down, I spoke with the chief today, I met with the chief and a deputy mayor. We went out to Ramapo Avenue, you are correct, that the stop sign was put in, unfortunately, it was being blocked by the tree.
Which recently did split, and they did have to cut it down.
Right, so now the tree, I looked at the tree today, the tree is, has been scheduled and work ordered for removal. O-N-R has to get involved because of the power lines that are going through the tree now, they planted the tree under the power lines. So, it's going right through the lines, the tree is, that whole major limb came off. So, once we resolve that issue, we're clearing the lines and taking the tree out, we are going to reinstall the stop sign with the appropriate street markings, and additional signage for stop sign ahead, whatever necessary signage is needed.
I mean, I've seen, in my old town, they have solar stop signs that, you know, to make it more visible for people, or I don't know what to do to make it more visible.
I think they use special reflective tape now. Charles, do you know anything about the stop sign and the reflectivity of the sign itself? So, yes, we are currently actively...
Are we only gonna put in one, or are we gonna...
As of now, yes, as of now.
Okay.
Actually, with the traffic study, it did call for one.
Okay.
And if you would like, I could show you the traffic study that we have.
That's fine. I know, I just talked to the last mayor, they were gonna do speed bumps, and then that was taken out also.
Right, I don't think that was recommended.
We have those signs that we, if, they're plastic, though, so if we put them in the middle of the, like, on the double yellow lines, people will slow down, but they blow down all the time. So, I mean, even if there's something like those cone signs that say slow down or something here and there, I mean, it's, it's a huge safety concern.
Okay. Like I said, we're, we're working on it actively, we were there today.
Okay.
I appreciate you doing this and bringing it to our attention and going out to all of the neighbors. Bring it up, sure, or, would you mind?
Neither of them. Thank you, Ms. Jolly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's good work.
Hello, my name is Margaret Campbell, I live over on Riverside Drive. About two years ago, during the last mayoral campaign, the former mayor had come to my house and was, you know, pitching her, her stick, so to speak. And I had mentioned about the parks, I said, and my envy of Bergen County parks, and I also mentioned the Salvation Park, Salvation Army Park, and I wish we had a park like that. And she had said, well, you're a village resident, you can use that park. So, on Sunday, I went with my three-year-old daughter, and we were at the Salvation Army Park, we were the, we've used it before, we were the only ones there, it's typically always empty. But she loves it, it's enclosed, I feel very safe there, I can see her from any vantage point, which is not something that I have at the other parks in Suffering. And I guess, I don't know if it was the daycare or who it was, some people came, and then another woman came and event, basically kind of accused me of trespassing, said, can't you read the sign, which I am very capable of reading.
This was a person from the Salvation Army?
Salvation Army, yes. Basically said, can't you read the sign? And I said, yes, I can. I said, I was told that we were able to use this park. I don't think she believed me, but basically she said, you need to leave. So, I need to take my daughter, who started crying and said, why are those grownups so mean? I said, well, it's their park and we have to go, and so, we left. But I'm just trying to get some clarity on what is the situation with that park? Are village residents allowed to use it? Did that change? The woman who told, who kicked us out said, well, now we have new administration, I don't know anything about that. I'm just trying to figure out kind of what happened, and what's the story regarding that park? Do village residents have the ability to use it?
You know what, I'm not 100% sure if village residents are allowed to use it, but I will kindly look into it. I've never heard it, it was never brought to my attention that they were or were not.
I was surprised when she told me, but I thought, that's fabulous, we'll use it. I mean, I've been there once or twice when officers with their children have been there, or trainees, I guess, and they've never, this was the first time we've ever kind of been confronted when we've been there.
You know, I, the interactions that I have had with Salvation Army were always positive in reinforcing that they want to be an integral part of the community and be welcoming, so I don't have an answer, but I will definitely have one.
Okay.
I'll make a phone call. Would you mind giving me some contact information after the meeting, or...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or now, whatever you would...
I said, it's, it's a beautiful park, and it's, it kind of offers advantages that the parks here in the village unfortunately don't. So, as a mom of a young child, it really is a great park for watching my child and feeling secure.
Okay. You know what, Kathy, would you mind taking her contact information, and you want to share it with everyone? So, Kathy, she works for us, and...
Hi, Mayor.
Okay.
I just know when the Salvation Army originally purchased that property, that we were allowed to use the recreational facilities, including the tennis courts and the like, and I myself used them a number of times.
Really?
And I don't know, I, I heard this... Yes, yeah, so, that was part of the original agreement, whether it was verbal or memorialized, I don't know, but a lot of people did utilize it within the community.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna look into that.
Hi, Paul Gerard, to Cross Street. The first item I have is a little bit of a nuisance issue. I don't know if this is better, just Clark, to discuss with you separately, but we have a recurring car alarm problem in the wee hours of the morning going on on Wayne Avenue, at the, at the end of Cross Street and Wayne. And we've made a couple of calls to the, to the dispatcher, and the most recent one was about 4:00 in the morning, this morning, and he said that he wasn't sure he could do anything about it, he'd have to ask his sergeant because it's private property. I kinda doubt that that's the answer. But, Clark, I, I could show you where it is, and, and maybe we could follow up on that, because it's happened a few times, and it's, you know, that last hour of sleep is precious, so...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. There's, there's an issue with what I guess I would call a, our charter school that's being proposed up on Cherry Lane. I know Mr. Kreshar was at a meeting, it was last week or the week before, over in, in town of Ramapo. I didn't see any other board members there. I was wondering if you folks who are aware of what's going on over there?
Somewhat aware of what's going on?
Okay, there's, I guess there's a...
Are you talking about the girls' school?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about the girls' school?
There's a girl's school and a boy's school being proposed on Cherry Lane, yes. And, yeah, the, the Ramapo School, Central Ramapo School Board had put out a notice of, you know, the concerns of that, and I, I just wanted to know if, if the board had any position on this issue, because, you know, as, as...
Hold on, Mr. Gerard, we have to change the tape, I'm sorry.
I wasn't even looking.
I'll show you, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good?
Good.
Okay, so, you know, the concern from the school district, which, you know, I don't know if anybody else feels, the school district, I think, is the lifeblood of this area. It attracts a lot of people here, and these charter schools, I mean, no matter who's building them, I think we run the risk of, you know, taxpayers, local taxpayers have to fund these, and the, because the, the school district is required to provide transportation, provide healthcare services, whether it's physical therapy, psychiatric assistance, anything like that, books, things like that. And, you know, that's obviously, has a potential for siphoning off schools from the public education to, to private ones, so I just wasn't sure what the board here is, is, like I said, I didn't see anybody there. This was an Armont meeting, because that is Armont.
Well, just, just for some of your concerns that you addressed about Ramapo Central School District and the board, I am currently sitting on a task force, working with the school district to, to bolster the community and the school district itself. And that is one of the main concerns, as you just stated, the charter schools or private schools coming in and siphoning off money. We are, the board, or I am aware of that, what's going on within the both school districts, East Ramapo and Ramapo Central. And we have been charged with trying to develop different types of plans to either entice businesses to come into the Village of Suffering or into Ramapo Central School District, along with their families to come into, to, I guess, say shore up the district itself. And that we are fully aware of what's, not fully aware, but we are aware of what's going on, on Cherry Lane and the surrounding area. And working with the school district, they're making us more aware.
Can I also point out, and I saw you at that meeting, obviously, they have not formally applied yet. I'm under no illusion that it's going to turn into a formal application, but a formal application triggers something that hasn't occurred yet. They have to notify, under the general municipal law of the state of New York, any municipality within 500 feet of the proposed project. They have to notify the county planning department, they have to notify, because of where it's located, the Rockland County Highway Department, the Ramapo Sewer District, town of Ramapo itself, a bunch of agencies. That has not yet occurred, because... That has not yet occurred because there is no formal application. So whoever gets notified of that also gets the application materials once they're submitted. So we're not there yet. But once again, you know, I believe that ultimately we will be. And that meeting that was held last week was an informal presentation by the applicant and their representatives. And I think you probably noticed, there was really no discussion by the board because there's nothing to discuss other than a conceptual plan at this point.
Right. Well, I just, yeah, I just, I think it would be a good idea and I would encourage this board to work with the board in Earmont to see what can be done collectively in the area. I mean, I realize it's a, it's an Earmont issue, but in terms of determining whether or not the school will be built, but it's an issue that affects everybody. And like I've done in the past, come up here, there are issues that don't necessarily directly impact the village, but they will impact us as residents. And I would like to see my local government do it, do what you can to help with that cause because that would, I, I feel it would be a serious detriment to our school district, which really affects every village within the town of Ramapo, that goes to Central Ramapo School District. Speaking of Ramapo, there was a, you know what happened with the convictions with the supervisor there? Mr. Mayor, you put out a message on Facebook on May 19th that said, I'll just read it. It says, "Today, we're closing a difficult chapter in town around post's history. Decision reached in the U.S. District Court in White Plains. We have once again seen that the criminal justice system works. We can now move forward towards a promising future for the town, and I applaud the decisions reached today as a decisive victory for the people of town of Ramapo. I'm calling on the town's new leadership to follow Suffolk's example and establish the required fiscal responsibility across the town's operations and activities. I strongly suggest that the appropriate controls be implemented to ensure the town government provides required fiduciary oversight over all the town's activities. It is refreshing to see that the town is finally positioned to have a fresh start and begin its journey to a brighter future. Sincerely, Ed McUnus, Mayor, Mayor, Village of Suffolk." So, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that you put that out. I'm, you know, I'm supportive of, I'm glad that they're taking, making a fresh start. I mean, we don't, the devil's in the details. We don't know what, what else is going to come from this. But I do want to call out a little bit on your comment that we've, we've, where is it here? We've established fiscal responsibility here. I haven't seen a lot of actions here that demonstrate that. I look at our financial statements and we have $22 million of debt per the most recent financially audited statements. That's the 2015 and 16 statements. And we have, we have liabilities, okay, on our balance sheet that were $18.8 million in 2014, $21.4 million in 2015, and are now at $25.4 million at the end of 2016. Now, we, we just closed up the 2016, 2017 fiscal year, so I won't know what those look like for quite a while. But, you know, these numbers are growing and we've, we've only got about a 12, $13 million budget for the general fund. I know that, you know, we've gotten long-term financing, which only resulted in us borrowing another, applying and getting another bond for over $5 million. We're now bonded for $10.2 million, so it basically doubled what we're bonded for. I don't, I don't see what we're doing here to reduce this debt. It's only increasing. I know that when this administration first got up here, you talked about things like a master plan and a long-term vision. I can remember, I can remember it, I, you know, we could pull up the videotapes and we could, we could hear it. I haven't seen or heard anything along the lines of long-range plan or addressing the debt that continues to grow in this village. I do not think we're being fiscal responsible. I think in 2014, we were labeled as the most fiscally distressed village in the state of New York. We haven't been rated again, only because those figures haven't been submitted, but I, I'm afraid to see what it would look like if we did submit those. So I'd like to know what's going on in terms of a plan to address the mounting debt in
So that's a lengthy answer, or a lengthy response. With long-term finance, with long-term planning, which we have enacted here and we follow with different procurement types, being able to go out for low-cost financing, of course, all of this debt that you're referencing did not occur in two or three years. This is cumulative over many, many years. We've been doing more with less. We've been restructuring. We do, we reduced hiring. We have more patrol strength in the police department. We have more men on the road. We have operations in the DPW that are successful. I mean, it's a balancing act between your debt and your expenses, as you know. And it just continues. And with Mr. Janito running the Treasury Department, we are in a much better place than we were two years ago, in 2014, when we were rated the most fiscally stressed village. According to our latest audit, we've been building our fund balancing, fund balances and reducing our debt. And according to our, our auditing firm also, is that our stress level has been increased, decreased, reduced. We are no longer the most fiscally stressed village in the state of New York. So we are taking the appropriate steps necessary to get us in the right position.
How, how do we know we're not the most fiscally distressed village in the state? We haven't, we haven't been rated since that, that last time.
We haven't been rated by the New York State Controller.
That's right.
But you're able to compute your own calculations based on the formulas that they provide you, and that's what has been done.
So where do we rank?
We are, we are ranked... Hold on. We have no designation according to our auditing firm.
Which is the lowest ranking.
So the ranking out of 100, we are weighted 40%, which falls into the category of no designation.
So you're saying what, out of 100 villages? There's got to be more than 100 villages in New York. What do you, what do you mean?
No, no, no. Not, not the number of villages, the percentages, a point system.
Measuring the stress.
Measuring the stress. So whatever variables, all the variables they put into it, they come up with a designation. So currently, according to the auditing firm, not the New York State Controller, because I just want to make that clear, there is no designation. There is no stress designation.
Okay, so there's no rating that indicates stress, fiscal stress? Where, where is that stated? Is that in the financial statements that are out on the website?
No.
Okay, why not?
I asked to have this done by the, by the auditing, auditing, auditing firm, and they provided me the information last week.
Okay, so, all right. I'm curious to see that because like I said, we've got, our liability balance keeps going up and it's, it's $7.5 million up in the last two years.
Well, the additional liabilities, of course, has to contain the long-term deficit financing also, which is something that we did. We consolidated all our debt into one, into long-term deficit financing.
Okay, so you, what, you intend to borrow, we intend to borrow ourselves out of this problem?
We intend to reduce our debt by financing it at a long term, at a lower rate.
That's it?
We're not, no, of course, that's not it.
Okay, that's, okay, of course, that's not it, so then, what else is there?
Well, I mean, we can sit here all night and go through contract negotiations. We can go through bargaining, through no salary increases for the last three years for certain non-contractual employees. We can go with not buying equipment for the DPW or police cars. We can continue on that path and try to maintain and hold together our village and save money at the same time as buying down your debt.
Okay. All right, well, I'm not going to take up the entire meeting talking about this. I mean, I'm...
Our credit rating went from negative...
I'm sorry?
In the past two years, our credit rating went from negative to neutral to positive, which allows you to borrow at lower rates, so to refinance your debt at lower rates.
Okay, but we're not paying back any of the, any of the money borrowed and that's, you know, we could get, we can get better rates on bigger and bigger balances. That's not going to get us anywhere. It's just going to keep a high proportion of the taxes that we pay paying interest.
Some of the debt is incurred by uncontrolled measures. I mean, it's very complex.
All right, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to continue going here. I, I know your treasure is not here. I will, I'll follow up and I'll take, I'll have more dialogue with Mr. Janito and yourself. But I, I just, again, I'm seeing, I'm seeing all the negative balances go up. That's, that's, you know, that's news to me that we've got a better stress rating. I'd be, I'd love to...
Take a look at the fund balances also. That'll be enlightening, that, you know, our fund balances went from negative fund balances to, to positive fund balances.
Well, I know.
Which looks, which credit ratings look favorably upon.
Right.
You know, to maintain a fund balance, to show, to show that you're, you're being fiscally responsible and having the ability to have a fund balance at the same time as paying debt.
Right, no, I...
You don't want a negative fund balance and debt.
Well, if you just, if you borrow money just to improve your fund balance and you just have a higher liability...
We're not borrowing money just to improve the fund balance.
Oops. Well, okay, I know we, we, we had a bond of $5.1 million, which was, which is half of the balance that we have now. And, and I did, I did make, I did a couple of meetings ago, make light of the, or bring to light that we had a $1.7 million surplus in 2016, which is the other big piece of that balance. That's where we, between the taxes that we charged and the other revenue streams, we took in $1.7 million more, yet we still raised taxes this past year. Okay. I'm all done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Janatino to Memorial. Mr. Gerard, did you forget the fact that we had to borrow...
Jim, just please address the board, please.
Okay, board, we had to borrow $4 million to erase the debt from the previous administration. That's why your indebtedness went up. Your $1.7 million balance in your general fund, you had over $3 million deficit in that fund. If you can snap your fingers and get rid of that, please tell me how.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. All right, thank you.
Oh, you're going to go to me?
Yes, Virginia, Village Clerk.
Okay, hold on. Okay, Mayor, we have a resolution that can be read.
I have it.
Okay.
I have it. Have a resolution authorizing the approval of insurance coverage with Allied World Assurance Company Incorporated for the Village of Suffolk for a term running from June 12, 2017 to June 12, 2018. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk hereby agrees to renew its various liability coverage for a period of, for the period of 6/12/17 through 6/12/18, or until sooner terminated or replaced with Allied World Assurance Company at a total annual cost of $180,672. Be further resolved, whereas the village will further realize an approximate 3% cost savings over the prior year's insurance coverage without any loss of any required terms. So with this cost, we actually negotiated a 3% reduction in our insurance. Be further resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk does hereby authorize the mayor to execute any and all required documentation approved as form and content by the village attorney to secure said insurance coverage on behalf of the Village of Suffolk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One thing, Mayor. Without yourself and myself interjecting and speaking to the insurance company, we would, we would not have got that 3%.
Correct.
Just let them know that. We negotiated it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, we have another resolution, Mayor.
Okay.
This is on PERMA.
Resolution authorizing the approval of workers' compensation insurance coverage with Public Employee or Risk Management Association, PERMA, for the Village of Suffolk for a term running 6/1, 2017 to 6/1, 2018. Whereas the village will further realize another approximate 3% cost savings over a period of a year's insurance coverage without any loss of required term. Now therefore be resolved, that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk hereby agrees to renew its workers' compensation insurance coverage for the period 6/1, 2017 through 6/1, 2018 with PERMA at the total annual cost of $566,546. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the discussion, once again, I'll discuss it. There was a negotiation that saved us an additional 3% of the previous year's policy. And keep in mind, so the public knows that just alone for the, for the public employee's risk management is $566,000. It's over a half million dollars a year for insurance coverage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mayor, we have two block parties coming up. One is going to be on June 17th, be held on Forest Snow Drive between Foxwood and Cresswood Avenue, beginning at 3:00, 3:00 a.m.
Do I have a motion?
3:00 p.m.
Motion.
3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Oh, I'm sorry.
More, uh...
Thank you.
More of a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? A motion passes.
Are you going to 3:00 a.m.?
Yeah, don't get small. I wasn't reading the resolution. The next block party mayor is on West Woffey Avenue, beginning at 10:00 a.m., and they're going to be going to 11:00 p.m.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm still right on that time because I...
I'm still right on that time because I remember at the workshop, there was a little bit of an issue.
10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.?
10:00 a.m.
Is that correct, Virginia?
That's what they put down, right.
Yes.
They may close earlier, they usually do, or it depends on the mood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
That's it, Mayor, for me.
Okay, Mr. Zawicki, Department of Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am requesting authorization for the mayor to execute the 2017 Stormwater II Education Program Agreement with Cornell Cooperative Extension. The Stormwater Consortium of Rockland County partners with CCE to provide required MS4 education and outreach at a cost of $1,000 annually.
I have the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the Stormwater Consortium of Rockland County and Cornell Cooperative Extension Program Agreement. Now for be resolved that the Village Board of the Village of Suffering authorizes the mayor to execute the Stormwater Consortium of Rockland County Cornell Cooperative Extension Program Agreement in the amount of $1,000, and that said funds be deducted from the appropriate budget line item as provided by the village treasurer. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. I am requesting authorization to solicit bids for roadway improvements Phase 8 project. Bids will be due on July 6, 2017 at 1:00 p.m.
I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to publicly advertise for bid solicitations for roadway improvement Phase 8 project. The bids will be due on July 6, 2017 at 1:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We've had, we, I'll discuss, we have identified the streets throughout the village, is that correct?
Yes, I have, I have a list of 15 roadways that have been identified as in poor condition, and there's other facility areas, village facility areas as well. We have obviously a certain amount of money, we have about $303,000 in CHIPS funds, and Mr. Genito has identified $60,000 in addition, so we will be going out for bids and getting done as much as we can within that dollar amount.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, would that include Yorkshire and Parkside corner?
Porch and Yorkshire.
Okay, so my question I wanted to ask later on was the storm sewer that's being repaired on that corner there?
Why don't we hold off on that and get through, yeah, just, we'll hold off on that and we'll speak about that after this resolution is adopted.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to solicit bids for the wastewater treatment plant digester boiler replacement project. Bids will be due on July 20, 2017 at 1:00 p.m.
I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to publicly advertise for bid solicitations for the wastewater treatment plant digester boiler replacement project. Village Board authorizes Mr. Charles Zawicki to publicly advertise for a bid solicitations for the wastewater treatment plant digest the boiler replacement. The bids are due on July 20, 2017 at 1:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to bring it to the attention of the public also that these digesters are a critical part of the digesting of the wastewater, is that correct, Mr. Zawicki, just so the public is aware of what these burners do?
Yeah, the digesters, as you stated, are a critical element of the operations of the wastewater treatment facility, and it is a biological process that has to take place, and they're an integral part of that, and to operate properly, they need to be maintained at approximately 100, 95 to 100 degrees, and in order to do that, we need to replace the boilers that we currently have. The boilers are early 1980, vintage currently.
Vintage. And just to keep in mind that these biofuel burners also burn the gas, correct me if I'm wrong, the digester gas that is produced during the process, so if we utilize the newer technology and re-burn the gas that we are manufacturing where we are not purchasing the gas from O and R, to some-
That's correct, yeah, the majority of that fuel for these boilers would be coming from the digesters.
Correct, okay. Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Joe, you have something for Mr. Zawicki, just let us interrupt you for one, because Joe's going to have to step out.
So at Yorkshire and Parkside, there's the storm sewer that's being repaired? Do you have a status on that project and when it might be completed?
Well, it's, it's much larger project than we normally encounter. Normally, when we need to rebuild a basin, it's something that we can get into and have it completed in a relatively short period of time. This is much worse condition, it's very deep, so we have been in, have had many discussions with the street department supervisor, and we are, have it on our radar, we have some weather issues, it seems like it rains every day, so we are, we do have it scheduled and we will have it done. I don't have, I believe we should have it done within the next two weeks.
Okay, the only reason why I bring it up is across the street from that, there is parking for the residents on Yorkshire Drive, and when you try to make that right-hand turn from Parkside to Yorkshire, the oncoming traffic, you're in that lane, you're trying to get around the barricades and the cones, I don't know if it would be a good idea if the DPW can put out temporary no parking in that area, just-
I'll take a look at tomorrow, see if we can come up with some-
Yeah, just to make the area safe for anyone driving or anyone walking or riding their bike or anything.
Okay. I am requesting authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with EnviroTest Laboratories. This agreement will allow for the required testing of the Village of Suffering potable water supply as outlined in the sampling and analysis protocol prepared by Quality Environmental Solutions and Technologies.
Okay, so I have a resolution here authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with EnviroTest Laboratories to complete the required testing of the Village of Suffering water supply. So this is, this, you're not getting away with it that easy. This is whereas soil sampling data from stockpiles of soil from the community field in Slutzburg, Gates of Prairie Cemetery, and old reservoir area in Hillburn was requested from the Rockland County Sewer District Number 1. These stockpiles of soil were generated from previous Rockland County Sewer District Number 1 projects, and in 2016 were deemed contaminated. Whereas the total project cost of professional services, lab services, and administration is estimated to be $41,000 as follows. Professional services, water sampling, analytical testing, village administration, additional analytical testing as may be required, and additional professional services, a total cost of $41,000. Whereas the mayor, the mayor has been in contact with George Holman, the chairman of the Solid Waste Authority, to seek reimbursement for these expenditures and continues to do so. Now for be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffering does hereby authorize the mayor to execute any and all required documentations approved as to form and content by the village attorney to execute the agreement with EnviroTest Laboratories, Inc., Newburgh, New York, to complete all required testing of the Village of Suffering water supply as per the water sampling protocol attached. Now therefore be resolved, also resolved that the project costs will be presented to the Rockland County Sewer Authority Board for full reimbursement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have any discussion?
Yeah, how are the conversations with Mr. Holman been going?
Not too bad.
Yeah.
It's, it's challenging, but we've been speaking and we will be seeking reimbursement for the $41,000. Did we have a motion?
Yeah, more than two.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
All right, thank you, I have one additional item and it involves O and R.
Please give me a minute to walk out.
Here.
Oh, you can be, you can, right there, you're fine.
Want to take this? Okay. Okay, um, yeah, all right. I am requesting authorization for the mayor to execute the Orange and Rockland Street Lighting Agreement. This agreement will provide O and R consent to convert up to 2% annually of failed streetlights to LED at no cost to the village.
Actually, I apologize, he sent me the resolution, I didn't want to, it's, it's two different things. One is replacing failed luminaries, uh, with streetlights, they will do that with LED going forward if the village agrees to that, that's number one. The second is to participate in the 2% system threshold, which is the village can request replacements, even of working lights, the way I read it, 2% per year at no cost to the village. So I would just amend the resolution, or add, be it further resolved that the village authorizes the participation in the Orange and Rockland 2% system threshold program for the replacement of streetlights to LED conversions. And then we'll, you know, I'll have Charles, I'll discuss with Charles, getting that through with, with O and R, but the first, the first agreement that you had relates only to failed luminaries. The agreement that was, I guess, submitted with the-
Can we, we'll put it in the resolution.
Right, now he's going to put it in, in dish-
I'll, I'll add it, I'll, I'll, I'll discuss it with you and Amy tomorrow and add the appropriate language.
Okay, so it's going to be on one resolution and one is for the replacement of failed luminaries?
Correct.
And then one-
Is to participate in the 2% threshold program with O and R, which is they'll replace 2% of your streetlights, the municipality's streetlights per year at the request of the village.
Even though they're not failed?
Correct.
Oh.
And the issue is, and again, Charles, it would be up to Charles to decide if it's cost-effective to do that with getting the LED lights, and the village still has to pay, you know, for the, for the light itself, the electricity, so to speak.
Right, the usage.
So whether or not it's worth it to do that, that would have to come from Charles, and he'll look into that, but at least it authorizes us to get into that program and make a determination on a year-by-year basis.
Okay, all right.
We can put the resolution and then change it.
So we have the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with Orange and Rockland to convert 2% annual streetlights to LED, and-
I'm sorry, I think it says, the current one says, resolved, all, the current one says all failed luminaries. What I'm asking for is be it further resolved-
Right.
-what you just said to-
Gotcha.
Participate in the 2% program.
Okay, so I have, I have the resolution in front of me to enter the agreement, to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with Orange and Rockland to convert failed luminaries?
Right.
And then the 2% threshold-
Is a separate-
Is a separate resolution, but we're going to, a separate resolved in the same resolution.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just the question, generally, an LED light is more energy efficient than an incandescent.
Right, right, but more costly, but the, and obviously, both are at no cost, the issue is, there's also a program if you wish to participate in more than the 2% program and pay for it, but again, that's an analysis that'll have to be done by Charles and Mike Genito, to see if it's worth to do it with the energy savings that you get.
Right.
But for now, we're just taking the free one, so to speak.
Right, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
You want to leave them out there or bring them back?
I'm going to take my, my generous resolution.
Yeah, I have it here.
All right, excuse me, I just have one more item, it would be a personnel item.
Hold on, wait for it.
Does that have to do with Orange and Rockland?
No.
Okay.
Can we give you back the resolution? Yes.
Okay, I have one last item that is a personnel item, I'd like to request executive session.
Okay, we'll enter into an executive session at the end of the meeting?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Finance Department. Mr. Genito is not present. In front of me, I have a resolution amending the 2016-2017 adopted budget transferring funds for the Department of Public Works to purchase a mower. Resolved authorization to amend the 2016-2017 budget transferring $10,200 from A5110.4 Street Maintenance Contractual to A.5110.2 Street Maintenance for the Department of Public Works to purchase a grass mower. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why don't we add no pro tonk to this?
To what date?
Okay, so we're going to add-
As to what date, I don't know when the actual-
The date, do you, Charles, do you know when we made the purchase of the mower, the date?
It was the last few days today, I don't have the workday date in mind, so. All right, so if we go back to May 15?
Oh, yeah.
It'll be fun.
It's like the 20-
We can make the authorization prior.
Authorization prior to the purchase.
Good.
Good?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
We have another resolution.
Okay, I have a resolution to appoint a deferred compensation committee and authorization for committee to solicit proposals for the Village of Suffering Deferred Compensation Plan. As the Village of Suffering currently spots a deferred compensation plan in accordance to the rules and regulations of New York State Deferred Compensation Board, and the rules and regulations require the Village Board appoint a deferred compensation committee to act on behalf of the Village Board under a model or plan prescribed in Section 9001. The rules and regulations, so long as such plan remains in existence. Whereas the current deferred compensation plan will expire in July 2017, now therefore be resolved that the Village Board hereby establishes and appoints the Deferred Compensation Committee to consist of the mayor, the village treasurer, and the village attorney to act on behalf of the Village of Suffering under the Deferred Compensation Plan, and be it further resolved that the Deferred Compensation Committee is authorized to solicit and review proposals for deferred compensation plan and associated services from qualified vendors and submit recommendations for such plan and associated services to the Village Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Mr. Crash Hour. Okay, um, I have two items. One is to set a public hearing amending Chapter 266.62.1 of the Suffering zoning local law with regard to site plans and their expirations. Right now, the- Right now, the way it's drafted, it doesn't take into account if an applicant has to get, it only gives 12 months?
Eighteen.
Eighteen months? And it doesn't take into account, you know, and I get, an applicant needs to get a permit from New York State DOT and a few of us in this audience know how easy it is to deal with New York State DOT.
Or not.
Or if they need something from the, you know, Army Corps of Engineers or other involved or permitting agencies. So what I'm gonna propose to the board is an amendment to the existing local law to better define when the time period starts, how it could be extended, and once a site plan is actually signed by the chairman, how long it's good for. Now, I'm gonna propose three years. I'm gonna do this in conference with Mr. Magrino, so I'd like the board to consider a motion setting a public hearing for July 10th at 7:05, is it?
7:05.
7:05.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for the public hearing on July 10th.
At 7:05, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, the second item is to hire a title company to do a title search for property presumptively owned by the Village of Suffolk, but which has had some intra-neighbor disputes. So we want to firmly establish if we in fact own it. So resolution reads, whereas the mayor and village board want to establish ownership and use rights of the property located in Suffolk Place 115 plus or minus north of the intersection of Lafayette Avenue as shown on tax map 54.35, and whereas the subject property is 20 feet wide by 78 feet deep, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the retention of a title company to perform a title search of the foregoing property. My best guesstimate is it'll be between $350 and $450 to perform that search.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, stop the tape.
The tape, stop, just make the motion and we'll.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
All in favor? All right, motion passes.
I thought we would just save another tape, but we did.
They're the short tapes.
Yeah, I have to get a few more tapes. I'll have to make sure.
We better go digital.
Let's go, Mayor. Let's go.
Any further, Mr. Crash Hour?
Uh, no.
Okay. Village trustees?
Nothing.
Anything?
Nothing.
No? Okay, good. Moving on to the mayor. I don't know why they dumped all of this here. Oh, the mackerel. Okay, in front of me, I have the resolution authorizing, oh, that's the wrong one. Resolution to renew a contract with Fred J. Rela to provide grant writing services July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2017.
2018.
Twenty, 18.
18.
Typo. Okay.
I made a late out of mine. Motion?
Whereas Resolution 45 of 2016 was passed by the Board of Trustees entering into an agreement with Mr. Fred J. Rela effective July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 to provide consulting services.
That's not a typo.
We fixed it.
No, that was the.
It's not.
Oh, it started in July 16.
Oh, yeah, that's right, it's not, it's not a typo. It's the renewal of the previous year's service, which I was referencing. Okay. Be resolved, the village board of trustees authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement with Mr. Fred Rela to provide grant writing services for the Village of Suffolk for a period of one year effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018 on the same terms and conditions as previously on the noted agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Bring home the bacon.
You're on a roll, Mayor.
I have a resolution in front of me establishing the position of Assistant Court Clerk in the Village of Suffolk Justice Court, whereas Rockland County Department of Personnel has a competitive class position of Assistant Court Clerk, and whereas the Board of Trustees authorized the creation of the position of Assistant Court Clerk on May 10th, 2017, and whereas the Deputy Commissioner of Rockland County Personnel authorized the establishment of the position of Assistant Court Clerk in the Village of Suffolk effective May 24th, 2017. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby establishes the position of Assistant Court Clerk in the Village of Suffolk Justice Court effective June 5th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, I have a resolution appointing Ann Rizzo to the position of Assistant Court Clerk in the Village of Suffolk. Whereas the Board of Trustees established the position of Assistant Court Clerk effective June 5th, 2017, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Ann Rizzo provisionally as Assistant Court Clerk at a pay rate of $29.51 per hour effective June 6th, 2017, with permanent appointment following the Rockland County Department of Personnel scheduling the civil service examination for the title of Assistant Court Clerk and Ms. Rizzo's passing of said examination. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint Maria Luisa Van Sickle to the temporary position of Data Entry Operator 2 in the Village of Suffolk Justice Court. Resolved that the mayor hereby appoints Ms. Maria Luisa Van Sickle to the temporary position of Data Entry Operator 2, vacated by Ann Rizzo, at a pay rate of $16 per hour starting June 12th, with permanent appointment following the Rockland County Department of Personnel scheduling the civil service examination for the title of Data Entry Operator 2, and Ms. Van Sickle's passing of said examination. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just to advise the public once again, with the restructuring of the court system and the positioning, we are, we are at a cost savings here with the hiring or the appointment of the Assistant Court Clerk along with the appointment of the Data Entry Operator 2 due to the retirement of a long-term village employee. So it's actually a great benefit to the village and the court system that we have two full-time employees at a savings, salary savings.
Bilingual.
And also a bilingual speaking Data Entry Operator 2, which is very beneficial to the court. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Resolution Dispatches Agreement.
Item E will be discussed in executive session. And the discussion of the commercial parking in the D lot for commercial vehicles in the Village of Suffolk. We've been exploring the possibility of leasing overnight parking to commercial vehicles in the D lot, which is located in, underneath the thruway of, of 59. And so that would solve a problem that, it's not really a problem, but we can see it happening is that commercial vehicles are being parked in driveways throughout the village. So if we offer them the availability to park their commercial vehicles somewhere other than in the front of their driveway or in front of their house, it will be aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors and the village residents. So we are still in research mode on that, just so everyone knows. Okay. So I have a motion to, enter, adjourn?
Enter.
Enter. Do I have a motion to enter into an executive session?
Motion. Personnel and contract matters.
To discuss personnel and contract matters.
Do you want to make a motion?
We may have a decision.
Yes, that's what, about the. To make it clear to everyone who might be interested, more often than not, we exit executive session and then just adjourn and don't vote. Very likely, there will be votes on either or both of these items. So process-wise, they're entering into executive session, rather than have you leave the room, you stay here, they'll leave the room. There'll be a discussion, once again, personnel and a contract issue. They will exit executive session probably in that same room, come back in here, re-enter regular session, presumably vote once again on one or both of those issues, and then adjourn. So I don't, if you want to stay to hear the results, you're more than welcome to, and it's proper under the open meetings law.
I make a motion that we re-entered into the public meeting, June 5th, 2017, regular portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What's the time?
9:37.
9:37.
9:37.
Okay, just to make it clear, there were no votes taken in executive session on two items discussed, one being a contractual issue, the other one being a personnel issue.
Okay, so, in front of me, I have the final and last resolution of the evening, for your enjoyment. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the dispatchers agreement, whereas the bargaining team for the Village of Suffolk and the bargaining team for the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 445, subject to ratification by the membership of Local 445 and ratification by the village board of the Village of Suffolk, that the new terms and conditions of the successor agreement to the collective bargaining agreement shall cover the period June 1st, 2014 through May 31st, 2018. And whereas the village board of the Village of Suffolk does hereby ratify said agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the village board of the Village of Suffolk hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the dispatchers agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's been enough discussion.
Nothing for me, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, does anybody have anything else? Any further?
Just a little housekeeping, that the other resolution will be tabled and considered a future date.
It's not even on the agenda.
What's your resolution?
Right, it's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
We have the resolution.
Okay.
Is that on the?
The other issue.
On the?
The personnel issue. It's, it's the personnel issue in an executive session, it's tabled. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much, thank you for joining us at this evening's lovely board meeting.